I'd like to call the Mentor City Council Regular Meeting for February 18, 2025, to order. The invocation tonight will be given by me. Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom and continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
(inaudible)
Julie, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Mrs. Dowling?
Here.
Mr. Freeman?
Here.
Mr. Kirchner?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Uh, Mr. Krieger is excused for this evening.
Mr. Mern?
Here.
Okay. Approval of minutes. Counsel, you are in receipt of the February 4th, 2025 Regular Meeting Minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Abstain.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Moving on to tabled legislation, we have two pieces that will remain on the table tonight concerning short-term rentals. Moving on to new legislation, Ordinance Number 25-O-016.
An ordinance advancing funds and revising appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Malinowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. Filipek. Members of council, this ordinance does two main things. Firstly, it authorizes a temporary cash advance in the amount of $700,000 from the city's general fund to the fire station fund. That's a fund that was established for the future building of Fire Station 3 replacement. And then, secondly, it authorizes appropriation revisions both to the general fund and to a couple state grant funds. The general fund items are located down at, projects located down at the Marina and Lagoons, and I would recommend approval. Thank you.
Counsel.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance Number 25-O-016 has been approved. Next is Ordinance Number 25-O-017.
An ordinance approving the construction of an observation tower within the Mentor Lagoons Nature Preserve with the assistance of grant funding, providing for the submission of this ordinance to the electorate and declaring an emergency.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, Counsel, consistent with our charter, any capital improvements at the, at the nature preserve does require a vote by our electorate in order to move forward. Counsel will recall that this has been on the ballot once, our 95-foot observation tower. We've moved the location for a variety of reasons, geography, but then just a placement in a, in a much preferred location. We've been working with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for a while. Our preferred location was within an easement which, when we built our boardwalk, they had okayed placement of the boardwalk within that easement. They were not as cooperative this go-around. So, we've identified a separate location, not too far from the preferred spot. We've got reviews happening right now for soil testing and that, but we believe that this is going to work out. So, in order to meet the timetable, we'd like this to be placed back on the ballot for consideration by our voters.
Counsel.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance Number 25-O-017 has been approved. Next is Ordinance Number 25-O-018.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the purchase of 2.7 acres of land to be subdivided from permanent parcel 16A0030000030 for the site of a new fire station to perform all actions in furtherance of the purchase and declaring an emergency.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel, we're very excited to be able to move this piece of legislation forward. This would allow us to move ahead with a purchase of 2.7 acres at the, at the corner of Plaza Boulevard and State Route 84, the location formerly known as the Sears Auto Center. This is the preferred location for Station Number 3's new construction, and we'd like to move forward with an, a design contract as soon as this agreement is consummated and the purchase is complete.
Okay. Thank you.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance Number 25-O-018 has been approved. Next is Ordinance Number 24, I'm sorry, 25-O-019.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Classic Ford for the purchase of six 2025 Ford utility police interceptors and declaring an emergency.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief Gunch, please.
Yes, Mr. Filipek. Members of council, as part of our vehicle replacement program, $232,000 was budgeted in 2025 to replace four Ford police interceptor utility vehicles, each with over 100,000 miles. In addition, two other vehicles will need to be replaced that were involved in accidents and determined to be a total loss. These two vehicles will be purchased and outfitted using funds from the city insurance account. The replaced vehicles can be disposed of by repurposing for city use or sold at an auction, depending on the needs at the time. Classic Ford has quoted a price which includes delivery options and extended warranty of $49,650 for each 2025 Ford police interceptor vehicle. This price is below the state contract pricing. Total cost for six patrol vehicles will be $297,900. Recommend approval for this purchase.
Counsel.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance Number 25-O-019 has been approved. Next is Ordinance Number 25-O-020.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Stantik Consulting Services, Inc., for the preparation of a comprehensive land use plan supplemental update for the city of Mentor and declaring an emergency.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel, it's been just about 20 years since we've had an update to our comprehensive plan. I mean, this really comes following the residential stud, study that we were, the housing study that we concluded last year and that we discussed at our more recent budget meetings going into this year. So, I'll ask Mrs. Cantanzarida to tell you a little bit about how we're going to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Filipek. This proposal, as Mr. Filipek indicated, is a comprehensive plan update that is more strategic than previous years with an emphasis on land use and zoning. As indicated, this would build on the housing study completed last year and focus on an analysis of commercial and industrial zone areas and underutilized parcels where development or redevelopment opportunities exist. This process would factor in how economic conditions that are currently in place will influence the future of development, development trends. This review should incorporate stakeholder and community engagement that will help us prioritize future land use goals and reach consensus on an appropriate implementation strategy to best serve Mentor residents and our business population in the future. We are recommending Stantik Consulting Services for this project since they are already familiar with the city and have compiled a significant amount of background data that will support this analysis. They estimate a 10- to 12-month timeline for completion with a cost not to exceed
Counsel. Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 25-O-021 has been approved. Okay. So, the next piece is what everybody's come here tonight for, and there's something I want to read before we get started and sort of set some ground rules for tonight because I know this is contentious. But to start, there is a place on the agenda where counsel entertains persons before counsel. In an effort to maintain an orderly meeting based on Ohio Revised Code 2917-12, any person doing any act which obstructs or interferes with the conduct or orderly progress of the meeting will be warned and/or removed from the meeting council room. So, every person speaking on this resolution will get four minutes, and when they come up, they'll be asked to give their name and their address, and that will start the clock timing. So, next is Resolution Number 25-R-103, a resolution condemning councilperson Scott J. Mern for gross misconduct and the violation of his oath of office and requesting that he submit his resignation. Now, this is the resolution. It's three pages long. I had intended on reading it tonight so everybody could get a greater understanding of what's in it, but the lawyers have told me not to. Lawyers have told me that that could be defamation. There's no mistruths in it. It is public record. It's available for everybody to see. So, I'm going to put it down, and if anybody wants to see it, it's right here, but people have lawyered up. So, we're going to move on to people who want to speak on this resolution. Scott, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I'll let them go first.
Okay. All right. First is Haley Holben. If you'd like to come up to the podium and give your name and address. Is Haley here?
Yeah.
Oh. Yeah, right here. Make sure you bring the microphone down so we can hear you. And name and address in four minutes.
Okay. My name's Haley Holben. My address is 1 Laverne Lane, Sharton, Ohio, 44024. Tony Jackson Davis is my boyfriend. Before September, we couldn't even tell you who Scott Mern is, but now we know. I'm only stating facts, and I'm not looking to personally attack anyone. Scott has not taken accountability for his actions. He does not carry himself as a member of society and especially as a councilman of Mentor, Ohio should. Scott Mern uses his title to intimidate and belittle others. From what I heard out of his wife Wendy Mern's mouth, Scott Mern only takes credit for good things he has done for Mentor, even when he clearly could not have acted alone. Tony has taken accountability for every decision he has made, and he was working incredibly hard to change his life around and make the best of the hand he was dealt. All of that was ripped away because of one encounter. While I'm not speaking today to excuse Tony's behavior, please try to remember that he is also a victim. He is a victim because of his skin color. He was called a derogatory racial slur and spit on by not only Scott Mern but by his wife Wendy Mern as well. The police report, which is now public record, states that Wendy admitted to Scott calling Tony a N-word. Her admission is also on police body cam along with her threatening Tony's life when she said, "You effing N-word, I'm going to kill you."
Okay. Can I interrupt you for a second? Please keep your comments just to Mr. Mern.
Okay.
And not members of his family.
Okay. Sorry.
That's all right. Proceed.
Um, Scott told Channel 5 News, "I said, 'Listen, I'm not calling you a N, but you're acting like one.'" Five months after the incident and after Mern was publicly asked to resign, he released an apology and stated he looks forward to attending implicit bias training. Racism is a learned trait, and after 55 years of this learned trait, three days of classes will not be enough to change his mentality. These are the people that you trust to be the face of Mentor? Tony was walking to the front of the building to check on Scott Mern and speak with police when he faced, when he was faced with life-threatening treatment by officers, which I will be addressing at another time. This was a traumatic experience that should have stopped when Tony rolled the window, down the window of the car to apologize for driving too fast. Instead, he was verbally abused and spit on. Tony has lost four years of his life because Scott Mern cannot do his duty as a man or a council member. A son was ripped away from his mother. A father was ripped away from his children. My other half was whipped away from me, a man that was just leaving work after a long day. Many people have stated that this was just a bar fight. So, my question is, why is Tony the only one man enough to take accountability for his actions, to apologize for his behavior, when he himself is also a victim because of his skin color? In 2025, racism is still very much around, and we certainly see that now. The situation is heartbreaking and devastating. It is unjust and unfair. With police reports and body cam footage now being public record, I believe city council has the needed evidence to remove Scott Mern from office. He is, without question, guilty of gross misconduct and malfeasance, either of which are cause for removal from council per the Mentor Charter. Please do not let this man continue to victimize any other person. He is only sorry that he was caught. Accountability breeds responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Next one's next. Next is Arlene Davis. Ms. Davis, you have four minutes and name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Arlene Davis, and I stay at 15409 Euclid Ave, Cleveland, Ohio, 44112. Good evening. My name is Arlene Davis. I decided to attend this town hall meeting about my son Tony Jackson Davis, a young man whose future is now delayed due to injustices that happened while he was leaving his job at Buffalo Wild Wings of two years to go home to his family. My son was leaving work. He wears glasses. He was pulling out of the parking lot last September. He didn't see Scott or Wendy in the parking lot. When he did notice them, he stopped abruptly. He rolled his window down to apologize, and instead of allowing him to apologize, Scott Mern decides he wants to reach in the window and grab him by his collar and tell him, "Do you know who I am? You effing N-word." So, I felt some type of way about that because, like, my son, he does have a history, and I feel like they used that history against him to give him the years that he got. He has four years away from his kids now, four years away from his family due to an injustice. I feel like him not being allowed to apologize to you and you taking it farther than what you needed to take it led us to where we are right now. Now, I'm asking for justice for my son. No justice, no peace.
Thank you. Next is Jeff Cook. Name, address, four minutes.
Good evening. Jeff Cook, 5966 Andrews Road. Scott Mern, it's time for you to resign. If not, council, it's time for you to remove him. Many citizens of the city will remember this the next time it comes for you to run. The last few days, we've seen Mr. Mern with his weak attempts at a remorseful apology, noticed that he wasn't apologizing five months ago at BW3's event happening. He is, he is apologizing now only because of the resolution, though all of, through all of this, he has cast himself as a victim. Maybe he has used his status as a city councilman to get this young black man a harsher sentence. Let's face it, Scott Mern is 56 years old. Are we to believe that five hours of sensitivity training is going to remove a lifetime, a big ol' try, and racism? Of course not. He needs to be removed from council. He cannot be trusted to make decisions for Mentor based on what's in his heart. Scott talks about his better angels. Those flew away 40 years ago.
First of all, I'd like to thank the president of council for showing us love. He knew we were coming, and he didn't want us to be out in the cold, had children. So, he gave, he invited us to come inside the one building downstairs and wait on time. So, thank you very much, President, Council. I want to thank also the sergeant over there. He showed us love as we came in, just like we knew you would do in the fine city of Mentor. The reason we're here is to represent Ronnie's mom because we definitely feel that our brother Garn is the one that really caused this whole situation, escalated this station situation, lied about this situation when he said he didn't call Brother Ronnie who's leaving work the N-word later to retract that. The fact that he's the first one that put his hands on Ronnie when Ronnie came to apologize. So, our dear councilman, who we respect dearly, but he has a problem because he's the one that escalated this, this. And on top of that, he really didn't apologize or didn't show any remorse till you all brought him to the carpet. Now, he's showing remorse, but in my opinion, we have a time bomb sitting up there on council, and you all that want to support him, I guarantee you, it will not be the same, it will never be the same because racist is racist, wherever you are, whether it's in Mentor, whether it's in Cleveland, wherever. And he showed a tendency of racism by the way he treated that young man, the way he called him the N-word, the way he grabbed him in his collar and said he's going, going to hurt him. But then, something happened to him, he felt pity. Well, I want to tell you, city council, I appreciate every one of you all. I love the city of Mentor. Ronnie, he loved the city of Mentor. That's why he was here. He's a working man and all of that. So, after getting four years, the four years in prison for coming out of Buffalo Wild Wing while the councilmen and other people were intoxicated and escalated this event, it's just a shame, shame, shame. And if, if, if it was me, I would resign on my own, but it's not up to me. It's up to this fine council to do due diligence and do the right thing because Mentor is not a city of racism. Mentor is a city of love. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Sergeant, and thank all of you all.
Mr. McCoy, can I, can we get your address for the record?
Yes, sir. My name is Art McCoy. I'm with Black on Black Crime, Inc., and my address is 15415 Kipling.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Next is Arthur J. McCoy.
Arthur McCoy, and 1884 Hastings Avenue. My opinion, I am 15 years old, and to hear what happened, I'm only now hearing about it, but within the few days I've heard about it, racism is the only word I can think of because to hear what I just heard just a few minutes ago, from what I've heard, he rolled his window down to apologize to you, and you, and you, and you physically put your hands on him. You had no right to do that. All he wanted to do was say he was sorry. He wanted to apologize for not seeing you and going too fast and nearly hitting you. I don't see anything wrong with that. If it was me, I would have apologized and left, and that's probably what he was trying to do. He had a long day. We, we all have, we all have rough days. It was probably a long day for him, and he was trying to just get home. So, what makes, but what I don't get is why he got four years in prison. What I don't get is why he got such a gruesome sentence. I, I'm not even going to say I. We cannot accept that. It's a shame. We are all asking you to step, to resign as a councilman. It's up to you to do it yourself. We can't make you do it. It's, it's down to you to resign. Because the way I see it, and I'm not even speaking for everyone else, I'm saying the way I see it, what you did was wrong. You're, you only told, you only told half of the story. You only told half. The least you can do is tell the full truth. Telling the truth is harder than, is, is much harder than lying. That's why, that's why a lot of people lie because it's so easy. Tell the truth and admit, and admit to all the stuff you did and even out, and even out what just happened. He shouldn't have gotten four years. He should not have gotten that group, that cruel of a sentence in, in jail. He should not have got that sentence, the sentence he was given. To hear you threaten him and call him a racial slur and put, put your hands on him, it's, I don't understand.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Next is Ernest Harris. Mr. Harris, if you could provide your name, address, and realize you have four minutes.
My name is Ernest Harris, and my address is 473 748th Street, Cleveland, Ohio, 44110. Okay. And I've been a black man for 75 years. I know racism whenever it sticks its head up, whenever. Down through Alabama, we fought against racism. I know everywhere. And I do know one thing, that if you have a racist man among this council, the whole, it's like a rotten apple that have a spot in it. You could leave it alone if you want to, but the whole thing gonna, gonna rot, and you're going to be unsuccessful because the rot that you present to the public. Now, you should have been teaching this young boy, not calling them names. You're 57, the boy's 30. You're older, man. Our job is to teach young men, and if you don't have the teaching capacity, you don't, shouldn't have a seat up, up here, not up here. And for your council members, if they go along and let you stay, they complicit with your racism, and you're going to have to deal with it. Down the line, you're going to pay for it. You will pay for it because every man reaps what he sows. Every man reap what he sows. I just want to say in short, I remember when you guys had the murder up at the school in Cleveland, we gathered money up to send to you guys because what we knew, you had a good government up here, but if you-
My name is Ernest Harris and my address is four seven three seven Forty-Eighth Street, Cleveland, Ohio, four four one one zero. Okay, and I've been a black man for seventy-five years. I know racism whenever it sticks its head up. Whenever, down through Alabama, we fought against racism. I know everywhere. And I do know one thing, that if you have a racist man among this council, the whole, it's like a rotten apple that have a spot in it. You could leave it alone if you want to, but the whole thing gonna, gonna rot. And you're gonna be unsuccessful because the rot that you present to the public. Now, you should have been teaching this young boy, not calling them names. You're fifty-seven, the boy's thirty. You're older, man. Our job is to teach young men. And if you don't have the teaching capacity, you don't, shouldn't have a seat up, up here. Not up here. And for your council members, if they go along and let you stay, they complicit with your racism. And you're gonna have to deal with it. Down the line, you're gonna pay for it. You will pay for it, because every man reaps what he sows. Every man reap what he sows. I just want to say in short, I remember when you guys had the murder up at the school. In Cleveland, we gathered money up to send to you guys. Because what we knew, you had a good government up here. But if you let this man stay on Consul, you're gonna spoil it and your racism gonna extend beyond your borders and your city become, gonna become foul and futile. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ken Jevnikar. Name, address.
Ken Jevnikar, one zero two five zero Cedar Row, Chesterlin, Ohio. Thank you, Consul. On September fourth, two thousand twenty-four, September seventh, excuse me, two thousand twenty-four, Scott Marn was brutally attacked by a violent criminal with multiple charges from his youth through the young age of twenty-seven. Since the facts of the matter, this has been turned into something they are not, I will state this attacker's criminal record and maybe enlighten some people why he got four years in prison. Attempted burglary, receiving stolen property, burglary F-two, assault F-five, theft three counts, receiving stolen property three counts, obstructing official business, resisting arrest twice, criminal damaging, assault, burglary F-four. In two thousand eighteen, attempted burglary F-three, identity fraud, aggravated theft, four probation violations in Cuyahoga County, criminal trespass, possession of cocaine in Lake County, where he had multiple probation violations, being sent to prison, including the, some kind of therapy. In two thousand twenty, attempted domestic violence, domestic violence, assault with probation violations, another domestic violence with probation violations. In two thousand twenty-one, domestic violence sentenced for, he was sentenced to two years probation and program, which was ultimately terminated, God only knows why. Another domestic violence, illegal restraint. In two thousand twenty-two, another domestic violence, which he was ordered to mental health treatment and anger management. In anger management. In two thousand twenty-four, there was a felonious assault of the second degree for violating, violently attacking and injuring Scott Marn. While this case was pending, he violated a protection order twice, which resulted in his bond being revoked from this case. This person is a ticking time bomb of violence. He was driving his girlfriend's car without a driver's license when he hit Mr. Marn with his car, pushed and spit on Mrs. Marn, then sucker punched Scott Marn, knocking him unconscious to the ground. When officers were attempting to detain him, he was so rampantly uncontrolled, the police were forced to tase him. He was spitting on police, hurling racial slurs at them, bashing his head against the police window, trying to escape the squad car and screaming wildly. He exhibited nothing but violence from the moment he came screaming through the parking lot and began verbally, physically assaulting the Marns who were trying to walk into the restaurant. Certain people have made it their mission to target and harass Scott Marn and his family and will try to have you believe the attacker is innocent when the entire Marn family has been attacked and violated upon belief. I personally witnessed Scott Marn lying unconscious and bleeding on the ground after he was assaulted. I witnessed the chaotic aftermath of this needless violent act. I witnessed the fear of Mr. Marn's family and the witnesses who saw the violence committed on him. He frankly, if something like this could happen to anyone here. I ask you, put your place, put yourself in the place of trying to walk into a restaurant, meet your children and family and be violently verbally and physically attacked for no reason. Then being faced with life-altering circumstances following the event. No one should ever have to go through what the Marn family has gone through. Thank you, Consul.
Thank you. All right, that's the last person.
All right, can I speak now?
Mr. Marn.
Well, there's been a lot of talk, and this happened on September seventh. The reason why my family and I have been as quiet as we've been is because it was a felony two criminal investigation. That night, we were meeting our two sons, some of their friends that are here tonight, Mr. Jevnikar and his wife, and my brother-in-law to have a nice family night, because my son was in town. My wife and I parked our car over by Eaton Park, pardon me, Steak and Shake. And we were walking through the parking lot where I saw Kenny and his wife walking into the restaurant. We stopped to take a look at the sunset. We're talking about how nice the sunset was. My wife brought up how nice it was that the movie theater was crowded. I heard a red car start up, foot to the floor, throw it in reverse, start driving around by La Mofa. Not letting off the gas, I look, made the left turn. I saw my wife flying over the car. Grabbed my wife, she's on my left shoulder, grabbed her right arm, threw her out of the way, threw myself out of the way. My left elbow hit the driver's mirror. You're startled, saw your life flash in front of your eyes. And I hope no one's ever been a part of something like this before in their life. And I hope no one is, will be a part of something like this before their life. Because everything flashes very quickly. I think I yelled, hey, my wife thinks you yelled, slow down. At that point, the car backed up, slamming the brakes, backed up, almost hit us a second time. I have pictures that I wanted to show tonight. Mr. President never got back to me. And I sent two emails showing the pictures and also the video from the trial of the, call it bad person's criminal record. At that point, my wife and I were picking ourselves off the ground and the person opened the car door and was just screaming at us. We have no idea what he said. Couldn't make out anything. I said, you're not apologizing, you're not stopping to see they're okay, there's kids in this parking lot. And it escalated, it escalated from there. It escalated from there, not by us. There's the pictures we have, that have shown you, it shows that we're walking clearly away from the car. It's an unfortunate incident. We shouldn't have been not called, the names that we're called, we shouldn't have been goaded. I was astounded by the use of different words and quite frankly offended by different words. I said, it's enough is enough. You need to go back to wherever you're going to. We said, we're going into the restaurant. Well, it just kept on escalating from there. This whole thing only lasted a minute or two. At that point in time, I said to my wife, take a picture of his plate, call nine one one. I'm done with this. She was then assaulted physically, phone was knocked out of her hand, went underneath the car. And he spit at my wife's face. Anyone in this room, if they had their wife finally attacked, the feeling is unjust of what you really want to do, what you really want to say. Then.
Nope. No interruptions, please.
So that was the hardest thing I ever had to do in my life. I told myself, which I did, you're on Mentor City Council, can't do anything, don't do anything, just leave, go inside the restaurant. Then, by this time, there was innocent bystanders there, I would say five. Or one person that was about six-four, about two hundred eighty, three hundred pounds. I said, that's it, let's go, we're done. He says, don't do anything, we already called the police. Said, you know what? Thinking to myself, you're right. I go, come on, said my wife, let's go inside. I was then pushed. Fell flat on my back, sprung back up. Gentleman said again, don't do anything. Be a white on black crime, don't do anything. At that point, I made the worst mistake I ever made in my life. And that was to turn away. I was sucker punch from behind. My head hit the ground, it was six staples. As anybody sitting on this Consul, if they had one of their sons, when you wake up and your son's holding your head, trying to keep the blood inside your head, it's the worst feeling in the world. I was then taken to the hospital and what had happened after that, I think Mr. Jevnikar explained enough with the resisting arrest, the tasing, the violence of all. And it was literally a violent time bomb that was willing to go off on anybody and anywhere. And it's a shame that that, this actually happened. If I would have been thirty seconds earlier, I would have said, look at that guy driving through the parking lot. If I would have been thirty seconds later, I would have said, look at that guy driving through the parking lot. There's no need for this to happen. Did I handle myself perfectly? I thought I did a pretty good job. I didn't attack him. I did not use any type of language. I did not use the N-word. I didn't spit on him. Everything he said here was false. No one was here totally but my wife and I. Could I have handled myself better? Yes. Because I did say, when you're goaded, because you're, I was called that two dozen times. And you want to call me that, you want to call me that. And I kept on saying, no, no, no. And I finally said what I shouldn't have said. I was contacted right after the event, the next day, by our police chief, our city managers, told them the exact same story I just told you right now. See if I was okay. I was then contacted by Councilman Krieger, Councilman Donovan, make sure that my family and I were okay. Immediately after that, I was contacted by Derek Abney, a good friend, Councilman in Painesville, part of the NAACP, and Chris Lee, Council President. What was said here was also incorrect. I promised them right after that this trial was over, where if you have a problem with the sentence, it wasn't my sentencing, it's what the judge, that's what, that's what the judicial system does. Take it up with John O'Donnell and the judicial system. I sat down last Thursday night, because I promised them I would, and I gave everybody the dissertation. We talked for an hour and a half about what happened, good, bad, or indifferent with the NAACP board. Their understanding, and they made me understand it from, my wife and I understand it from their way. So that's why we issued our apology. They said, do we have apology within a week? I said, no, you'll have an apology tomorrow. We stayed up until two thirty in the morning writing that apology. I ran by Chris Lee and Derek Abney. We changed a couple of things. Chris Rees suggested the training, which I said, you know, Chris, that's a good idea. No one's perfect, no one's perfect in this world. Maybe I could learn something. So I says, if you want to do it, we'll do it together. So Chris Lee and I are sitting down together and we're gonna do this training. And hopefully, like he said, we'll both learn something, because it's never time to stop learning. It's an unfortunate incident. I wouldn't want anybody to be a part of this. It's a wrong place at the wrong time. At least you finally heard the truth after five months. Look up the court dockets, look up all the information there, look up the actual truth, not what's taken out of context by media, by people online, and the complete garbage and rubbish. I've served my Consul people well over twenty-five years. Done the best I possibly can for my constituents for twenty-five years. I will not be resigning because I didn't do anything wrong. It was a wrong place at the wrong time. And once again, nobody in Mentor or, and/or Lake County should be subject to what transpired. But I'll be running again in the fall. Thank you.
All right. Joe. Joe Zeman. My recommendation is that we put this on first reading.
Correct. As noted, we had, due to a medical issue, one of the councilpersons couldn't be here tonight, so likely not sufficient votes to suspend the rule.
All right. Consul, do I have a motion?
Still moved. Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Who said second? Did you say second? Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirsner?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
All right. Resolution number twenty-five dash R dash one through, one zero three has received its first reading and will be read again at the next Consul meeting. Third readings, we have none. I'm sorry, second readings, we have none. Third readings, we have ordinance number twenty-five dash O dash zero zero one.
An ordinance enacting section one fifty-one point zero one one of part one, title five, of the codified ordinances of the city of Mentor, two thousand and six, as amended to establish a nepotism policy.
All righty, so this is.
Move to approve.
Oh, wait, before we do that, there are two people wishing to speak on this nepotism ordinance. First, we'll hear from Jeff Cook again. Jeff here.
Good evening again, Jeff Cook, five nine six six Andrews Road. I'm here tonight to urge you to pass this nepotism ordinance. I bet that if you asked your citizens, not a single one of them would agree to letting you hand out jobs to your family members. I took the time to look this up in the Ohio Revised Code, chapter one oh two, section two nine, to one point four two states, using the authority or influence of a public position to secure authorization of employment of a family member is prohibited. During the Consul meeting of March fifth, twenty twenty-four, you people on Consul voted seven to zero to approve ordinance number two four zero zero two five. My understanding is that at the time, almost all of you were unaware that this job you were creating in engineering had been promised to Scott Marn's son Dylan Marn late last year, prior December of twenty-three. I requested all of the emails regarding this job. I discovered that the job had been promised to Dylan Marn long before the city Consul vote. I also learned that this job was never posted to give opportunity for others to apply. I cannot see how Mr. Marn can claim that he was not involved or knowledge of influence on the creation of this job for his son. At your last Consul meeting, this nepotism ordinance was first introduced. Five members of Consul voted to present nepotism and mentor. Two Consul members, Scott Marn and Matt Donovan, voted abstain. What should the residents of Mentor make of that? Does that mean that they feel that Consul members should be entitled to hand out well-paying jobs to their family and friends? I have a feeling I know why Scott Marn voted abstain. And I don't know why Matt Donovan did, and I'm still working and looking into that.
Thank you. Next on this ordinance is Daniel P. Lorich. Realize that you have four minutes, and if you could give your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Daniel Lavrick, L-A-V-L-I-C-R-H. I live at ninety-one eighty-eight Tortugas Lane. This is the third time that this resolution has been put forward before the Consul. And I find it quite disgusting as a resident of the city of Mentor that this is the third attempt that we are having at passing this. Quite frankly, aside from anything that was discussed earlier in this meeting, it should be disqualifying as a councilperson to create a six-figure salary position knowing that you have promised it to your son and that it will not be open to anyone else to qualify for or to apply for. And quite frankly, that the same man who is the father of the man whose son it had been promised to and one other man abstained from this should be disqualifying to them both. As it shouldn't be an abstain from the vote, but it should be viewed by the public as an affirmative that not only do you endorse this behavior, but that you would do it again. Or that since it's not your son, that you would do it if given the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Want to say anything?
Yeah, sure, why not? With the public. Part, part two of the public witch hunt, I guess. Mr. Kaminski. You called me when my son was sixteen years old to cut grass at the lagoons, correct? Because he was a minor, he needed help.
Yes.
Mr. Swigger, you called me when my son was a minor, was cutting grass at the lagoons to move him to the Civil Engineering Department. Because you put him in charge of moving the dirt from Garfield, which was three thousand truckloads, to Springbrook Park, correct? Mr. Fowler. Explain my son's position the last eight years that he's worked here and what that entails.
Well, I personally can only speak for the last three years, because I've only been here for three. He's worked as an intern in the engineering department for a duration of the time that I've been here until that ordinance was passed and subsequently was appointed to the tech position part-time at a rate of twenty dollars an hour plus.
Okay. So what the, what was he paid when he was interning and you moved into a tech position? What was the difference in salary?
Can't speak to them on the floor. I apologize. I don't have that information in front of me.
Okay. Is my son still going to school full-time?
I believe that to be the case, yes, sir.
Okay, for engineering and an engineering tech.
Correct.
So far off of $100,000, far from a full-time job. How did he receive the job?
Was appointed by the city manager in accordance with the charter.
So there wasn't any wrongdoing? Because council, we're a legislative branch, we don't have any control over the administrative branch. Once again, trying to get to the bottom and get to the facts. Correct?
The charter has a provision that clearly states that council should not interfere with administrative and employment matters.
Mr. Filipek, did you and I ever talk about this situation?
The hiring of your son? No.
Mr. President.
So what I'm just trying to wrap up is, it's a part-time job, no increase in salary, I still go on to school full-time, become a civil engineer and civil technology major that I didn't know about, and you and I never discussed it. And that's the reason why I abstain, because my son's working part-time, going to school full-time, city of Mennor, about 15, 20 hours a week, and that's why I'm going to abstain again. Just want to get the facts out there for once. Mr. Kircher, I apologize for taking too long.
That's all right. Mr. President, I have to say, I've known Dylan since he was a baby. Sorry, Dylan. Sorry that I had to bring up your baby at one time, but I've worked with Dylan when he was an intern with the city. We walked a number of bike lanes to find cracks and holes to report, and Dylan was very diligent in his job he did. I never heard any complaints about the job he's done. I'm sure he's doing a great job. The only issue was, I think the only issue that we came up against is that, you know, I don't think there's anything... My son worked for the city, cutting grass when he was in high school. And in this case, I think the only issue anybody had was whether there was an issue about whether Councilman Marn should have voted on it. If he didn't know, he didn't know. If he did know, that's another issue, but that's, I think, the importance, having this nepotism law or a rule will help not only this council, but help future councils. But as far as Dylan's concerned, I... He did a good job. He's worked his way up from walking with me in the streets, and I think whatever he's doing now is right along the lines of what he's studying to do.
President. I guess my name was mentioned. I'm okay with this bill now. I just didn't want it to affect people who were hired before we came up with this ordinance. Why should the people suffer who were hired just because they're related to us and they had the qualifications and the certifications? My sister works here, and she just didn't get hired because she's my sister. I ran into Mr. Filipek out in the front of this building, and he told me, hey, we hired your sister. And I said, wow, that's fantastic. My sister has all the certifications you possibly need, and she's in continuing education at all times. She's probably one of the best workers in this city. Sorry to say that. I mean, she's fantastic. I don't want to put Kathy on the spot, but she does her job very, very well, and she's certified. And I wanted to make sure that people who were related to us didn't suffer because they were related to me. There's people who are going to come to the city, and they're going to apply for these jobs, and they're going to have the qualifications and the certificates and the education, and they're going to get hired. That's in here. If I'm wrong, Mr. Zeman, correct me. But those people are going to get hired anyway because they're qualified. They're going to do an interview process, they're going to have all the certifications they need, and they're going to get hired. So this nepotism bill doesn't bother me one bit, because nepotism doesn't go on here. I'll tell you that for number one. Number two, we never thought of it. And then, if we want, we could... Mr. Zeman, I'd like to go through this bill thing by thing here, 151 nepotism. If you want to read them, and we could comment on them. 151.011, start out at A and read it, and if we don't like it, we'll amend it, we'll change it, we'll fix it, or we'll vote for it. I don't have a problem with this bill or this ordinance. There's nobody up here in this city that is bringing in people not qualified for the jobs and not going through interview processes. In fact, we're not even involved in it. Mr. Filipek hires, they go to him, they go through the process, they get interviewed by Mr. Filipek's people. Mr. Kaminski, Mr. Swigger, Mr. Robert. But yeah, let's go through it, because I don't have a problem with it, because it doesn't happen here. So A is... Do you want me to read it?
Go ahead.
No, Joe, you read it. I don't want to read it all. You read it. You get paid for that.
Division A, no person shall be eligible for employment with the city of Mennor if the person is a relative of an elected official of the city of Mennor, the city manager, the assistant city manager. Division B, no person shall be eligible for employment with the city of Mennor if the person is a relative of the department head, assistant department head, or supervisor of the department in which the employment position is placed. No official or employee of the city of Mennor shall have supervisory responsibility over a relative. No employees are eligible for promotion or transfer if such act would result in a violation of this subsection. Employment means all positions for which any form of compensation is paid. It does exclude seasonal and volunteer positions. Seasonal would be summer lifeguards. Relative is very expansive. I don't want to read through it, but basically, anyone by the first, second, or even a higher degree. And the exceptions, I think, that Councilperson Donovan referenced is that, one, we do have a civil service commission here, so there's competitive examination. It's a very standard exclusion, so even though it may be a relative of a department head, for example, if they go through selective service, they exam, we have a civil service commission, they establish the highest standing list, and so it's really above board in that regard. It does not affect continued employment of existing employees. And it does not mean that if an existing employee has a relative elected to office, that they would have to resign. And also, we have to honor our collective bargaining agreements, so if it conflicts with any of our collective bargaining agreements, that would take priority. Thank you.
Thank you. One more comment. You know, we have a lot of people that work here in the city, and we live here, and we have a lot of children and relatives that live in this city, and they go to Lake Hafek, they go to Mennor High, they go to our grade schools. They dream of working for the city one day. My concern was that we were going to block individuals that deserve to work in their own city. We don't need to send our individuals that are qualified to cities surrounding us just because we think we have a nepotism problem. I don't believe we have a nepotism problem. And I'm going to tell you another thing about Dylan. Dylan's loathed in his department. They love this guy. They love my sister, they love Dylan. These are two people that you're never, ever going to find anything wrong. They're hard workers, they're dedicated, they're there every day, and that's one of the reasons I had a problem with this ordinance. But now I'm okay with this ordinance, so we could carry on.
Anybody else?
President. Oh, Ken.
Thank you. You know, counsel, I appreciate all the comments, and I know this is something new for us in our 60-plus history. We haven't had this, and I think it speaks well of our charter. Our charter does a very good job. We are one of the few communities in Lake County that have a council manager for our government, and I think it's been good for our community. You've had some very successful people running this administration and very, very successful councils over the years. We haven't really commented on this because I think we respect what I think council's trying to do here, which is avoid the appearance that there is favoritism among the hiring for the city. I will tell you that from the administration standpoint, at least during my 15 years with the city, there's been no member of this council that has ever tried to influence any hiring decision, and we appreciate that and we respect that, and I appreciate the fact that there's mutual respect between our branches of government. I will tell you that everyone that gets hired in the city earns their positions based on their skills or their qualifications, whether it's been demonstrated over time, whether it's been demonstrated in other communities. Every recommendation that comes before us as an appointment is reviewed and recommended by our directors of our, in our city, whether that's the city engineer's office, or the director of planning, or the police chief. And I believe that they've served the community well over the years. You know, I'll stand by our staff as the finest in northeast Ohio, perhaps the state of Ohio. So I think you can be confident that we're trying our best to hire the people that will do the best for our, for your constituents, for our residents, and because we all care about the outcome. So we certainly have no objections to this ordinance, and we certainly understand why you're bringing it forward.
Thank you. Counsel, additional comments? I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Hey, ordinance number 25-O-001 has been approved on third reading. Ken, managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Counsel, we have two open-cut requests for your consideration. One, the first is at 8239 Munson Road for a new Aqua Ohio water main valve replacement to replace an inoperable gate valve. Ask for your approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The second is at 8315 Munson Road, also from Aqua Ohio for a main valve replacement to replace an inoperable gate valve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Excuse me. Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Counsel, a few other things. Over the past several weeks, the city of Mennor's Natural Resources Division has received inquiries related to dead waterfowl in our community, which are generally attributed to the bird flu, or otherwise known as the avian flu. The Lake County General Health District advises that bird flu spreads naturally in wild aquatic birds, including gulls, terns, and shorebirds, and wild waterfowl, such as ducks, geese, and swans. For most people, there's a very low risk of getting sick, but it can infect other animals, including household pets. So residents are advised to avoid direct contact with wild birds and to keep cats and dogs away from all dead or sick birds, including both wild birds and chickens. Cats are more likely to experience sevile illness or death as a result. We do ask our public that if they see dead birds in our public parks, along the roadways, or in other public areas, to please contact our Public Works Department so that they may be removed and properly disposed of. If you have a dead bird on your property, then we ask you to contact our Natural Resource Division for guidance on how to safely dispose of it. Mennor City Council will hold a public hearing for a council democracy day tomorrow night in this chamber, February 19th, from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. at the Mennor Municipal Center, in order to take public comments on the impact of political contributions of corporations, unions, PACs, and super PACs on the city. Any citizen of Mennor may attend and participate. Counsel, Mark Haynes Construction is scheduled to begin construction activity on the Bellflower Meadowbrook Ditch Restoration Project soon. The project will remove vegetation and sediment in the ditch from Bellflower Road to nearly Raymond Drive, restoring that to its original stormwater capacity. This is almost a 5,000-foot-long ditch. The preliminary work for this is already started, and I know, Mr. Freeman, this was a project you wanted to see move forward. We will begin, you'll see some activity out there this week, including some surveying. Within the next couple of weeks, they'll be doing some tree removal out there. Residents have been notified by letter, but they'll get a follow-up letter as well on what to expect. Actually, we're pleased with the fact that most of the work will be accessed from either Bellflower Road or Sycamore Road, so we won't really be disrupting maybe just a single backyard fence that might have to be removed, but then the city will replace that following the project. So if there's any questions on that through anyone affected or who has received that letter, they can contact our engineering department to get further details. And finally, counsel, we have one new business to announce here tonight, Power Yoga Collective. It's now doing business at 7501 Mentor Avenue. So we thank them for placing their confidence in our community, and we wish them great success going forward.
Thank you, Ken. I also have the memo for the democracy day tomorrow, right here at 5:30. I believe you and I will be here for this.
10 years in a row.
Yeah.
Many members on this board have joined us for that, so...
And I do invite all members of the community to come and participate in this. Just always learn something at this event, so thank you. All right, moving on, clerk's correspondence. Julie.
Counsel's in receipt of pavement, excuse me, liquor permit transfer from Lake Shore Eatery, Inc., DBA, 72 Grill, to ZGMK LLC, DBA, The Spot on Lake Shore at 7272 Lake Shore Boulevard. Counsel is also in receipt of a liquor permit, a new one for Pari Mentor 1 LLC, doing business as Indian Kitchen at 9552 Mennor Avenue and Patio. Counsel is also in receipt of a liquor permit transfer from Crab King and Felicious LLC to Santino LLC, DBA, Stantis Family Restaurant at 8900 Mennor Avenue. And last but not least, counsel is also in receipt of Mennor Municipal Court month-end report for January 2025. That is all.
Thank you, Julie. Commission committee reports. Counsel, you're in receipt of the Community Arts Commission, January 9th, 2025. Board of Building and Zoning Appeals, January 14th, 2025. Municipal Planning Commission, January 16th, 2025. Counsel, all business? New business?
Mr. Blake?
Yes, Mr. Donovan.
I've got some good news. I'd like to congratulate one of our young boys who went to our grade schools, went to our middle schools, played football for Mennor High School, went to BW and played football. And Joey Casper ended up being, he was determined, and I knew someday this was going to happen to him. He ended up, he's a defensive coach for the Philadelphia Eagles, and Joey won a Super Bowl. And so one of our Mennor High graduates, who totally was determined to get to this spot from when he was a child, actually has pictures of him holding the Super Bowl trophy. So I'd just like to congratulate Joey. You know, he lost his father a few years back. We coached football together in Mennor Youth Football for seven years, and he just was determined, and he ended up holding the Super Bowl trophy. So I just want to congratulate Joey, and I know it has to do a lot with the Mennor community, the Mennor schools, the Mennor Youth Programs, and it's a shining on all of us, yeah. If he lets me bring the ring, I'll bring it.
Bring the trophy.
I don't think we'll see a bronze one.
Okay, all right. So if that's the rest of new business, we'll move on. And here comes persons before counsel again. All right, first is Don Dickard. If you'd like to come up to the podium, your name, address, and realize you have four minutes.
I'm here this evening to ask counsel for assistance. Who should we reach out to to get help?
Excuse me, Mr. Dickard, could you give your address, please?
I'm sorry. Don Dickard, 8786 Warren Dale Drive, Mennor, Ohio.
Thank you.
We're here this evening to ask city council for assistance. Who should we reach out to for, with the parking issue at the Mennor Lagoons? We have asked the office at the lagoons and the Parks and Recreations for assistance. This issue has been ongoing for several years, but we did not begin documenting until 2023. As we did not realize, we would not get any help. My wife has gone to both offices at the lagoons and the parks and recreations for assistance. My wife has gone to both offices, at the Lagoons and the Park and Recorations, multiple times over the past several years. We have taken photos and videos of both, to show both offices just what the issue was. Both offices agreed that the situation was unacceptable, and they would reach out and address it in a new contract. Over the past two years of being ping-pong back and forth to two different offices, being reassured that this would be addressed, nothing was done, and we are still here for direction. As you can see by the photos, they park right next to our dock, not in the designated parking area, right in front of our dock. They have built a permanent dog run in the grass area, which reduces the grass area more. A simple do not park in such a way was to block our neighbors' view would possibly solve this issue. We cannot go, where do we go from here? Yeah, please. These are the dock that we're at, and this is the dock, and these are the cars that are in the view all the time, when out front off the main road is a big enough parking area to probably park 500 cars. Why they chose to park all the way up, I have no idea. I think it's even a safety issue with the way the cars are nowadays with the catalytic converters. I mean, it could start a fire, the grass, the little leaves. It's just, if we could possibly get them to park in a parking area, there's how close they are to our dock. This is what I look at down there. I mean, anybody from council is welcome to come down and view what I have to view seven days a week, or when I go down. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dickert.
Mr. President. Excuse me, sir. What, is this B dock? It looks like B Dock?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought it looked like. Thank you.
Right on the main channel.
Okay.
You care to mention who your father is/was? Maybe that'll pull some slack here for you.
No nepotism.
I'll leave that alone. Thank you.
Full disclosure, we're cousins, his father used to be the city manager of Mentor. A lot of you youngsters might not know that, but Art Dickert was our city manager years ago.
Can't help you.
You're out of luck.
All right. Next is Teresa Simon. Please come to the podium. Name, address, four minutes.
My name's Teresa Simon. I live at Six Metalon Drive, Unit Nine, Mentor, Ohio. I am a ten-year resident in Metalon Condominium Association, and it's been a tragic three years of trying to get back on our feet during some reorganization of our board. Currently, I do not serve on any position on the board, but I get at least three to four, five phone calls a week from owners in Building Four, owners in Building Six, an owner that will not get heat this winter. Some of these heating issues have gone on for five or six weeks. That's one thing. You would think we have a board we can go to. We have no communication with our board. Last year, we got four newsletters from our board. We received no meaning minutes, no sign-off on the reserves. Communication is minimal. If we try to communicate with our neighbors from one of the seventeen buildings, we can't do it on social media. If we go on social media and even use the word "Metalon," we are going to get slapped with a daily fine and a lien on our condo. If we complain too much, the association attorneys will be involved where we can face a lien on our condo. It's, for the people that have had no heat for up to five weeks, it's literally a Gulag situation. We have limited common areas, private homes. It's mostly owner-owned in our association. We have common amenities like sidewalks that the children walk to the school bus on. That can't be utilized. The bylaws are not followed. Owners are intimidated. We've gone to our council, we've gone to the Lake County Board of Health for mold, black mold hoarder issues that are seeping into our neighboring units from hoarder units. There is no oversight, and it's not just a Metalon issue. I know there's a lot of older condominium developments in the City of Mentor that don't believe that they have to adhere to the code of every other private residence, city codes that every other private owner has to adhere to. There's no teeth in trying to maintain any kind of standard with these associations. Metalon is probably one of the worst right now. We're told that we can't have our sidewalks because there's no salt, but we don't have any maintenance either. We have one or two guys for two and a half miles of driveway, road, and sidewalks, maybe five, more like five miles. Salt is one issue. They don't, there's no snow blowers, there's nothing is maintained, and now they're trying to say by bylaw they're not required to clear the sidewalks. Something as simple as, we have EMS that come to assist the elderly if they have to go to the hospital.
You have thirty seconds.
Thank you. We need some teeth to put into city ordinances, and I don't know if it has to come from the state level, where these associations aren't ran by despots. Getting rid of them is horrific, and the standard of these associations pales in comparison to the rest of the city, and that's horrible. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Last but not least, Mary Beth White. And when you come to the podium, please realize you have four minutes, and name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Mary Beth White. My address is 7420 Far Hills Drive, Concord Township. I am employed by the city as a seasonal employee at the Mentor Community Recreation, I'm sorry, Recreation Center, and I'm here today to ask what our plans are for the new aquatics center. Is there a date on which we're going to break ground? One of our bigger concerns is what this facility is going to look like. One of the things that, as an assistant coach for Riverside High School, and knowing so many of the Mentor High School swimmers, we would love to see a competition pool, and I don't know, I'm curious if that's in the plans at all. Is there anyone who can address that? Do we have any date, maybe, on when we plan to break ground?
Ken, would you?
Mr. President, well, we're still just working on conceptual designs on that. We're not anywhere close to really being at a point where we can even present council with some options, let alone pricing on that. I wouldn't rule out a competitive pool being a potential part of that, but at this point, it's not the highest priority on the recreation capital improvement program, but it's important to us, and I think, you know, I think Mr. Kaminsky has demonstrated that we can do a lot with that rec facility in a short amount of time, so I know that the council is anxious to see some ideas, and we'll bring you those this year for sure.
Let me just interject also that with a competition pool, you have the potential of making some money. I know that Riverside High School, at this point, uses, we rent out Perry's pool for our practices, and then we have to find a place, well, we use Perry then when we host a swim meet. Chardon High School also has to rent a facility. So besides the fact that your own Mentor High School would have use of the competition pool, but you also have other, you have the potential of other high schools in the area that might be willing to rent it out at a fair price. I know a lot of schools are leaving Spire because of the high cost. So just so you understand that the prospect of a competition pool could be of value to the city as well, so.
Thank you. So stay tuned.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Second.